Welcome to the City Council Meeting for November 25th. Would you please join me in saluting the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'd like to once again welcome Councilors-elect Shirley Azak and Shayna Barnes tonight. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Counselor Sullivan.
A moment of personal privilege, if I may.
You may.
I'd like to take a moment, first of all, to welcome some great Brocktonians to the chamber tonight. There is a core group of dedicated, really vested residents in the city of Brockton, and they go by the group name Helping to Unite Brockton Cleanup Crew. And if you're not familiar with the hub, or what these individuals are doing is, they're going around to different locales within the city of Brockton for months on their own time, and they're cleaning and beautifying and really doing yeoman's work in the city of Brockton. And I thought it was appropriate to have these individuals that care so much about our community to come in tonight, first of all, be recognized by the council, but more importantly, to make sure that the general public, the people here in the city of Brockton, understand, and if they'd like to join this group, there's always a welcome. But I thought it would be really the right thing to do going into the holiday season, to first of all, recognize these people. They're young, they're middle-aged, they're elderly. There's a good mix of great people that are doing really great things in the city of Brockton, working in conjunction with the city. The city's picking up some stuff. But they took it upon their own accord to say, you know what? We want to clean this area, and we want to clean this area. And a lot of these people did not even know each other. They didn't live close to each other, but they formed a bond, a friendship, and they're really doing, like I said, just wonderful, wonderful things. So if I could just take a moment, if you are a proud member of this group, if you could please stand right now.[125.53][125.53][applause] If there's no objections, Mr. President, I'd like to have two individuals just come forward and maybe explain briefly some of the locations and how other Brocktonians that are watching or here tonight could get involved. Mr. Jacob Taggart, and then the youngest of the crew here, Austin, if you could come forward.[154.47][154.47][applause]
Which one of you is Austin?[162.62][162.62][laughter] Which one of you is Austin?
I will thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you. Anyone say thank you?
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
I want to make sure I bring up a few more of the members now, my friends. Caller Mama P., Linda P., she probably cleans up more than all of us. Oh, goodness. And of course Donna, since Donna is our speaker now.[192.62][192.62][laughter] She can just tell a little bit about the group. Yeah?
Oh, you put me on the spot.[198.12][198.12][laughing] Hi. Don't know what I'm saying, but like areas we cleaned up that we're most proud of, I think, is the Snow Clock, is one that looks absolutely beautiful, thanks to Chet going in there and planting flowers, and now it's all decorated for the holiday season. Keith School we just did, the E.B. Keith Park we just did, the Community Garden on Legion Parkway, not Legion Parkway, Frederick Douglass.
The police station twice.
The police station twice.
My yard.
Yard.[233.12][233.12][laughing] That wasn't one of our regular cleanups, though. That was a side job. But every Sunday, we want to keep going.
Keith Park.
Keith Park, and, oh, sorry. As you people, as you all speak to your neighbors, you're, encourage them to join us. We just want to get bigger next year. We want groups for every ward in the city. So help us out on that, and we'll keep helping you out.
Also, I would like to recognize that, again, we're all neighbors here, city council residents. Appreciate that you guys are recognizing us here. I want to make sure I recognize Mr. McMillan, who was there at our first cleanup, and others. Mr. Petty was there with us at the Keith School. He actually initiated us going down there, and he was right there with us. And Mr. Brophy at the Keith Park. That was a lot of fun, too, so pulling weeds.[289.83][289.83][laughter] I hand two, no tools. And again, I'm, thank you, Counselor Sullivan, for inviting us here, and just basically thank you.
And is there a website or an email they can go to if they want to add on?
We're working on the website. It's sort of just getting going. But our email address is help2unitebrockton@comcast.net, and it's help, the number two, unitebrockton@comcast.net.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.[325.52][325.52][applause]
We also want to thank all of the councilors who have helped us, and in the spirit of neighborhood and neighbors helping neighbors, we know that one of your big issues coming up will be the new budget, and it's always difficult to find money in the budget. Santa's helpers, we're a little bit busy helping out the patriots and also helping with the weather this weekend, but Santa asked me to come and deliver to each one of you a million-dollar bar, just in case you need it.[355.12][355.12][laughter][356.12][356.12][applause]
Thank you very much.
Again, Mr. President, members of the council, I just, I just thought it was appropriate tonight, and I do expect to see many, many more residents of the city of Brockton that are going to join this group as we go in past the winter into the summer into the spring. And again, I just want to thank each and every one of you for the time that you put in to better Brockton. Thank you very much.[386.21][386.21][applause] Thank you very much.
We're going to take a two-minute recess. Mr. Clerk, item number one.
The appointment of Alanda Matero, 50 Highland Street, Brockton, as a constable of the city of Brockton for a term of three years.
Item number two.
Petition of Court Street Service for a motor vehicle repair mechanical license located at 65 Court Street in Clerk's Office, September 12, 2013. Hearing assigned for November 25, 2013, at 8:00 p.m. All paperwork is unfiled with no objections from the fire department.
Counselor Danapoli.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to move, to postpone this until the next city council meeting.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to postpone until the next city council meeting. All those in favor? Opposed? Postponed. Item number three.
Petition of Prestige Car Wash Realty LLC for an underground storage license located at 245 North Pearl Street in Clerk's Office, October 8, 2013. Hearing assigned for November 25, 2013. Letter from the fire department with no objections, and all necessary paperwork is unfiled in the clerk's office.
Time having arrived for the hearing, for those that are present and speaking in favor of, please come to the podium.
Thank you. Good evening, Counsel Ryan Airy and members of the council.
Attorney Creedon.
The owners are here. It's a standard situation. We're requesting two 15,000-gallon underground storage up at the Prestige Car Wash situation. We've been through zoning. We've been preliminarily sent through the site review, and now we're here for this situation. They're compartmentalized. In other words, there'll be 10,000 gallons in one, that's for regular fuel, 5,000 for diesel. In the other one, which is compartmentalized, there'll be 10,000 for regular fuel and 5,000 for super. It's your very standard thing. As you know, this is regulated by the state from a safety point of view, so the council should have no concerns, and I know you've done these before. They're totally double-walled and have monitoring systems 24/7. Again, it's totally regulated by the state also, and monitored and checked regularly. We'll have at least two employees on premises at all times, and there'll be the proper ballots and everything else for safety.
Any questions? Counselor Cruz.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a question, are these just, are these replacement or are these additional storage?
These will be new, new storage.
New storage, new pumps also?
New pumps, there'll be, there'll be four, what they call four regular pumps with eight dispensers on either side, as they're just like the Hess and the Mobil that are there on each side. So eight, eight total pumps, excuse me, dispensers, but only four pumps.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other questions for the attorney while he's here? Is there anybody else present here in favor that wishes to be heard at this particular time? I'd ask that they come forward and come to the podium and state their name and address. No one? Is there anyone here not in favor of, I'd ask that they come forward to the podium and give their name and address in regards to this matter? Seeing as none, I'm going to declare the hearing closed at that particular time.
Question is on granting.
All in favor? Opposed?
Yes.
So granted.
We have a report of the Finance Committee for its meeting of November 18, 2013. Petition to amend stipulations of the motor vehicle repair license on North Side Auto Repair, Inc., 774 North Main Street, Brockton.
Time having arrived, I declare this hearing open. Is there anyone here in favor? Please give your name to the clerk and...
Lynn Caloruso.
Ms. Caloruso?
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Counselor McMillan.
Fellow counselors, we had stipulations, strict stipulations on this company for a long time, and I felt that they've been doing a great job lately, well, since I've been counsel for the past year. So I'm striking the old stipulations and institution just new stipulations for the business, which is follows. Seventeen-car maximum on the lot and in the garage. Outside repair for emergency only, which Mr. Caloruso explained to me that he does a lot of work with plows, and they can't fit into his garage, and his, the former stipulations where he couldn't do any outside work. So they blow a lot of hydraulic lines and such, so that's what that's all about. No outside storage of parts for more than 72 hours in the gated area. Business hours were Monday to Friday, 7 to 7; Saturday, 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m.; Sunday, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. No residential on premises, no retail of alcohol or dairy products. Dumpster must be fenced in in accordance to our ordinances. He agrees to comply with all local ordinances and state laws, and no outside vending machines or telephones. The clerk has the stipulations.
Okay, and I'll take those under advisement until the hearing's over, then you can make your motion. Any other questions? Counselor Stewart.
Mr. President, actually, no questions, but I will speak on behalf of this business owner of Brockton, who I've had the fortune of getting to know very well, and actually go to your establishment. I think you guys run a very upstanding operation, and I'm happy to see that those restrictions are removed so that you can do a better job of what business owners do, which is try to, try to grow. So I'm certainly in favor of this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here in favor? If so, would they step forward, give their name to the clerk?
My name's Charles Caloruso. I'm a resident.
Your mother owns the building?
My mother actually owns the building, and we've been, actually, it was North Shore Booty actually had ran the place, and now my brother has purchased the business, and in order to go and be successful, we would like to go and have the stipulations removed.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here in favor? Seeing none, I declare that portion of the hearing closed. Is there anyone here in opposition? If so, please step forward and give your name to the clerk. Seeing none, I declare that portion of the hearing closed.
Mr. President, motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is to, on those stipulations.
On the stipulations, yes.
Second.
Motion made and seconded on the stipulations. Vote is to grant as stipulated. All those in favor? Opposed? License is granted. Thank you and good luck.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Item number five.
Report of the Finance Committee for its meeting of November 18, 2013.
Accepted and placed on file.
...from the mayor submitting a letter of resignation from Deborah Bean from the Board of Trust Fund Commissioners.
Accepted and placed on file.
We have an audit in submitting Chapter 27 of the revised ordinances of the city of Brockton. Chapter 27 zoning is hereby amended by adding Section 27-24.3, Medical Use of Marijuana, in council, January 14, 2013. Ready to refer to Standing Committee of Audits and Planning. In council, November 12, 2013, substitute audits passed by hand vote, passed for third reading by hand vote. Favorable as amended.
Question is to be ordained by roll call vote. Will the clerk please call a roll?
Brophy. Yes. Cruz. Yes. Danapoli. Yes. Ryan Airy. Yes. McMillan. Yes. Petty. Yes. Stewart. Yes. Stidinski. Yes. Sullivan. Yes. Nine in the affirmative.
The ordinance is adopted.
Mr. President.
Counselor Ian Airy.
Mr. President, if I may, I'd like to move for reconsideration in hopes it does not prevail.
Second.
Motion made and seconded for reconsideration in the hopes it does not prevail. All those in favor of reconsideration? All those opposed? Reconsideration fails. Item number eight.
The appointment of Daniel Campbell, 16 Belcher Avenue, as a constable of the city of Brockton for a term of three years, in council, November 12, 2013. Ready to refer to Standing Committee on Finance. That report is favorable.
Question is on adoption by roll call vote. Will the clerk please call a roll?
Brophy. Yes. Cruz. Yes. Danapoli. Yes. Ryan Airy. Yes. McMillan. Yes. Petty. Yes. Stewart. Yes. Stidinski. Yes. Sullivan. Yes. Nine in the affirmative.
The order is adopted.
An appropriation of $1,900,000 from unappropriated estimate receipts to the stabilization fund in order to fully appropriate the city's fiscal 2014 estimated revenues prior to the property tax classification hearing, in council, October 28, 2013. Refer to Committee on Finance. That report is favorable.
Question is on adoption by roll call vote. Will the clerk please call a roll?
Brophy. Yes. Cruz. Yes. Danapoli. Yes. Ryan Airy. Yes. McMillan. Yes. Petty. Yes. Stewart. Yes. Stidinski. Yes. Sullivan. Yes. Nine in the affirmative.
The order is adopted.
Mr. President.
Counselor Brophy.
Does it move for reconsideration in hopes it does not prevail?
Second.
Motion made and seconded for reconsideration in the hopes it does not prevail. All those in favor of reconsideration? All those opposed? Reconsideration fails.
Appropriation totaling $100,000 from unappropriated estimate receipts to the general fund, the general fund revenue subsidy of the Park Recreation Enterprise Fund, $50,000, and from unappropriated revenue of the Park Recreation Enterprise to Park Recreation Enterprise Personal Services, other than overtime, $50,000, in council, October 28, 2013. Refer to Finance. That report is favorable.
Question is on adoption by roll call vote. Will the clerk please call a roll?
Brophy. Yes. Cruz. Yes. Danapoli. Yes. Ryan Airy. Yes. McMillan. Yes. Petty. Yes. Stewart. Yes. Stidinski. Yes. Sullivan. Yes.
The order is adopted.
Appropriation of $300,000 from unappropriated estimate receipts to the water fund, the stabilization fund, in order to reserve the costs for the water utility, which are not directly paid by its budget, in council, October 28, 2013. Refer to Committee on Finance. That report is favorable.
Question is on adoption by roll call vote. Will the clerk please call a roll?
Brophy. Yes. Cruz. Yes. Danapoli. Yes. Ryan Airy. Yes. McMillan. Yes. Petty. Yes. Stewart. Yes. Stidinski. Yes. Sullivan. Yes. Nine in the affirmative.
The order is adopted.
Mr. President.
Counselor Brophy.
I move for reconsideration on items 11 and 12 in the hopes it does not prevail.
Second. Motion made and seconded for reconsideration on items 11 and 12 in the hopes it does not prevail. All those in favor? Opposed? Reconsideration fails.
Order that the city council authorize the approval of the SolarNet Meter Credit Agreement between 126 Growth Solar LLC and the city of Brockton, a copy of which is attached here, too. This agreement is for the purchase of solar power from a solar plant, which will save the city in electricity costs. In council, October 28, 2013. Refer to Committee on Finance. That report is favorable.
Question is on adoption by roll call vote. Will the clerk please call a roll?
Brophy. Yes. Cruz. Yes. Yes. Ryan Airy. Yes. McMillan. Yes. Petty. Yes. Stewart. Yes. Stidinski. Yes. Sullivan. Yes. Nine in the affirmative.
The order is adopted.
Resolved that the mayor chief financial officer and the personnel director be invited to appear before a committee of this council to discuss limitations on contracts being presented to the city council for a period of six months prior to a city election, in council, November 12, 2013. Ready to refer to Committee on Finance. That report is favorable.
Question is on adoption by roll call vote. Will clerk please call a roll?
Brophy. Yes. Cruz. Yes. Danapoli. No. Ryan Airy. Yes. McMillan. No. Petty. No. Stewart. Yes. Stidinski. No. Sullivan. No. Four in the affirmative, five in the negative.
The resolve is not adopted. Counselor Sullivan.
Mr. President, if I may, I have a late file relative to the report of the ordinance committee.
Second.
Motion made and seconded for a late file on behalf of the report of the ordinance committee. All those in favor? The late file is accepted. Mr. Clerk.
Report of the Audit Committee for its meeting of November 20, 2013.
Accepted and placed on file.
Mr. President.
In a minute, we're still on this one. We now will have the order, the order read.
An audit is amended Chapter 27 of the revised ordinances of the city of Brockton. Yet ordained by the city council of the city of Brockton as follows. Chapter 27, zoning of the revised ordinances of the city of Brockton, is hereby amended by amending the zoning district map on the southerly side of Field Street, east of North Main Street, more particularly described as plots 109 and 110, Field Street, in council, September 23, 2013. Ready to refer to Standing Committee on Audits and Planning. That report is favorably, favorable.
Question is on sending for a third reading. All those in favor? Opposed? Sent to city council.
An audit by which the city of Brockton accepts Mass General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 5, and, in order to authorize establishment of a program to allow veterans as defined in clause, Mass General Laws, Chapter 4, Section 7, Clause 43, to volunteer to provide services in exchange for reduction in real estate property tax obligations of that veteran on the veteran's tax bills, which reduction shall be in addition to any exemption or abatement to which that person is otherwise entitled. In council, February 25, 2013. Ready to refer to Standing Committee and Audits. That report is favorable as amended.
Questions on the amendment. All those in favor? Opposed? The amendment carries. No, a third reading? Questions on sending to a third reading. All those in favor? Opposed? Sent to a third reading. Counselor Ian Airy.
Thank you. Mr. President, Mr. Chair, there's actually one more.
There is one more. My fault, as usual.
An audit is amended Chapter 2 of the revised ordinances of the city of Brockton, yet ordained by the city council of the city of Brockton as follows. Chapter 2, Administration, Article 4, Financial Affairs, is hereby amended by adding the following new section, 2-260, Senior Citizen Property Work Off Program, in council, July 23, 2013. Ready to refer to Standing Committee and Audits. That report is favorable as amended.
Questions on the amendments. All those in favor? Opposed? The amendments carry. Questions on sending to a third reading. All those in favor? Opposed? The order is sent to, for a third reading. Now we have to take Counsel Ian Airy's? Counselor Ian Airy.
You sure?
Sure now.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time I'd like to move...
That football game went late last night. I'm tired.
At this time, I'd like to move for a late file, and if possible, suspend the rules and act on it also this evening.
Second.
And just, the clerk has a late file, but just to be brief with it, it is in regards to our city seal and abuse of the city seal, and it is talking about how to increase its penalty. So I'll let the clerk read the late file.
Motion made and seconded to accept a late file and to act on it this evening under suspension of the rules. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Clerk.
An audit in submitting Chapter 2, Administration, Section 2-2, City Seal.
The clerk is here. If anybody has any questions? Otherwise, the question is on, question is on adoption by roll call vote.
I'm sorry, Mr. President.
Mr. President, could the clerk please advise us?
He can.
And to the public why this is so important?
Absolutely, Counselor McMillan. Thank you.
This, this ordinance is in effect, however, the penalty is very slight, and we're finding that it's being abused by the media, it's being abused on the networks, websites, and even on buildings, and on solicitations. And that's only because there's a $50 fine, a one-time fine. However, we're recommending, as other cities and towns are doing, to increase that fine to $150 per day, and that seems to stop these violations. The Secretary of State's office is, in effect, agrees with the, our attitude, the clerk's attitudes, on the city seal, that it should not be abused.
Mr. President.
Counsel, you're going.
Just for the public to, should I stand?
No, you can, you can sit.
Just for the public, that city seal is not to be used by anyone without permission from the city clerk, that's what we're talking about. A lot of these websites have been used for political reasons, they put the city seal on it, and they're using it, so it looks almost like it's an official website from the City of Brockton. So this is what this is all about. It's been, been abused, was abused this year, this time during the election, so the clerk has asked us to do this, and I'm definitely in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Questions on adoption by roll call vote. Will the clerk please call a roll?
Cruz.
Yes.
Denapoli.
Yes.
Ryan Eary.
Yes.